Good evening and welcome everyone to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Work Session for Thursday, November ninth. And let's see today, so I'd like to call this meeting to order and do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
The move.
Second, it's been moved in seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any days, the ayes have it, thank you everyone. Customer buddies online and I believe Vice Chair Caff, uh, Vice Chair Cassover is suffering through a Zoom update right now, she'll be with us shortly. Never fails. And so tonight, we have just one topic on the work session. Draft resolution authorizing the Merit Sign Amendment number two to the Professional Services Contract Agreement AG twenty-one dash oh two. Transportation Solutions for Design Instruction Management Services for the SR one oh four in forty place northeast roundabout. The oxygen after that, and I think, uh, and he's got, is taking the lead here tonight. Please.
Thank you. Yes, so I'm here to, to discuss the proposed amendment, the idea being to walk members through the details during this meeting and then we'll come back, I mean, at least one more time, uh, the defense meeting in December. For additional discussion or action. With me is Kirk Harris, the project manager from our prime consultant, Transportation Solutions Inc. Also available just to answer questions, um, more knowledgeable on a lot of these subjects than I am, so I'm happy to have his support. So, um, I'll try to, you know, just kind of quickly get through, you know, what was included in the cover sheet. For you, but the, you know, the short story is we have experienced some changes in the project scope that require additional support from Kirk's team to address and keep the design moving. That were not anticipated, at least last time we had this kind of, you know, contract checkpoint last December when we executed the first amendment to the contract. And so they, they fall into, you know, Kirk and his proposal, organize them into applied categories of relating to the source of additional cost. I tried to, uh, you know, consolidate those a little further, make it, you know, somewhat simpler, you know, into three categories of additional cost and I'll just kind of, you know, give a brief description of each of those. So the largest of these are cost driven by Seattle City Lights requirements related to relocation of their facilities, their poles, roadhead wires, ordinances. So we've been working with SCL, I mean, really for the last two years, but most intensively over the last year to confirm how their, uh, facilities are going to be relocated to avoid conflicts with what we're trying to build here. And we're at the point now, I think, where we're, you know, all that confirmed what that final design looks like. And the details, basically where the, um, where their poles and other infrastructure needs to go. It's all going to be located within areas that are existing right away or there or right of way that we're proposing to acquire. Uh, but they do have a requirement to provide aerial easements within, say, ten fifteen feet, I think, depending on, you know, the classification of the wires, you know. Well, you know, I'm on a voltage of there is before. This basically for SCL operations use, yeah, maintaining, uh, facility. So most tree trimming, I'm not sure what other activities they do, but the, yeah, the offsets from where we're going to be placing our facilities to the limits of that, um, that clearance zone that they need extended private property. Uh, and require that we obtain easements from an additional three properties. Um, so that requires updates to our ready for plan, additional right of way negotiation, uh, support from the design teams right away agent and, um, you know, appraisals, I think there's like three additional appraisals that are needed. So that's the, of this, you know, bucket of costs, that's the single largest piece that I think the, um, this category of costs amounts to like seventy-seven thousand dollars in the, just the right of way changes. Are something like forty-five thousand of that. Uh, the remainder of it is additional effort that Kirk's team has had to expend to really get to the point that we are today where we have a design that, uh, that SCL is, you know, we believe on the precipice of accepting. That has been, um, it's been a much more challenging process than I think any of us anticipated, you know, our franchise agreement. With SCL, you know, doesn't require SCL to provide, uh, information in the way that I think we would have preferred in the way that I think all of the other six utility, um, you know, uh, companies, facilities are being relocated have cooperated with our team and provided information. So it's been, it's been an outsized effort, I think, for their team to, um, work with their engineering team and develop something that works for the project. Um, so you know, there's just a additional cost that's associated with that. So that's, that's that first and largest bucket of, um, category of additional cost. The second are design changes that are driven by, um, two new ordinances that were enacted over the summer. Uh, that was updates to the tree canopy preservation code and, um, a new ordinance regarding retaining walls. And so there's a, you know, the highlights of the design changes that this creates for us is, um, like there's a new permit type uh, that has different submitted requirements, um, that we, like, we, we knew we were going to have to get a tree removal permit, but that permit has different requirements and I think, um, frankly, less orders requirements than the, uh, new type of permit that, that we'll be obtaining. So there's new services required of the consulting arborist on Kirk's team to provide those, uh, additional materials. There's, um, there'll be additional, um, site plan changes, you know, when we determine, I think this is all driven by, um, uh, the amount of trees that we're going to have to plant to replace the ones that would be impacted by the project that the new requirements are, you know, long story short, we're going to have to plant more trees than we, uh, we were planning to prior to, uh, enactment of that ordinance. And so many of those will have to be planted offsite. So there's kind of a exercise of going looking for suitable planting sites within right of way and then developing same plans to, um, direct the contractor as to, you know, planting in those locations. Uh, so that's, that's one of the, um, ordinance driven design changes. The others, the retaining wall. Ordinance that requires a noise study, requires a, a new permit, um, that, uh, that we'll be obtaining and, um, and then that permitting processing, uh, involves tenants and a neighborhood meeting. So there's some costs, you know, associated with having Kirk's team provide, uh, support for those elements. The last category of additional costs are just other, um, utility relocation, uh, driven support that the city requested Kirk's team help us develop. And that was, um, I think the, the expectation about these additional services, I'll kind of explain what they're about in just a moment, but as to their budgetary impact, you know, we, we anticipated these were going to be covered by the contingency funding we had in the contract to begin with. Um, I think they would have been, but the, you know, the, if this was the only change, we probably wouldn't need a contract amendment. It's really, we're, we're here mostly because the other two categories, which are larger additional costs, um, kind of pushed us over the, uh, over the limit of the contingency that we had in the contract. So anyway, the, um, this, I kind of boil this down into a nutshell because it's kind of a complex subject, but, um, in our, in our existing scope, you know, for, for Kirk's team to provide utility relocation support, I think the, um, the assumption has been that utility relocation, even though we had several utilities to relocate, but that would work sort of the way it does, um, on the projects of this type. I mean, ideally, you're able to determine where utilities must be relocated and then have your, um, you know, issue your notices to the utility companies to relocate, uh, in advance of when you're going to be doing your project work so that they get their utilities, uh, out of the way of our project improvements and then our contract can come in to do their work, so it's unimpeded by, um, by their activities. As we began coordinating with utility companies, uh, in January of this year, we realized that that, that approach doesn't work for this project. Um, mainly because where the utilities need to be relocated, uh, would not be, would not be feasible today. Like, you know, a lot of, um, the relocations were happening. For instance, in the northeast quadrant of the site, the northeast corner of the roundabout, where the grade or the service elevation is going to be coming down about ten feet. Um, so for instance, we have to tell SCL to relocate their poles to that location ahead of the project. Because they, you know, they just have to come down again when our, you know, when our retaining wall is built, that will shoot out of my greatest leverage. And so we, there were, that's one example, there are a few examples of how we believe the utilities kind of have to be relocated and, and, um, it's sort of a particular sequence. I think there's three of them that wouldn't do all of their work um, at once, but sort of do, you know, some of the work, allow for another utility to do their piece and then come back to the site. And so there's been some effort, uh, from Kirk's team that's been necessary to help define what that sequence will look like. And, you know, conduct meetings with utility companies to gain their concurrents of that plan. So that everybody has clear expectations going into this as to how, you know, what order everybody needs to show up in, what, you know, what sort of, um, scope of work they're doing at each step of the process. Um, and the benefit of that, while it does add some consulting costs at this I phase is that you have a, um, a more orderly process with, you know, have a dozen different contractors, uh, involved in this ever. Of not showing up at the same time and not, you know, having an understanding of what, uh, the other, the other contractors who are moving facilities, you know, in this area are doing. So we think that that greatly minimizes the risk that, um, you'll have a, um, you know, a change order from our, from our construction contract before delays associated with their activity. And so that's the, that's the impetus for, you know, adding the support to, uh, to our scope.
So, um, we should pause for questions if you don't, if you don't mind. That's a lot of terms, so, yeah. colleagues, I, I can imagine this, this group not having a bunch of questions, Mr. Furter. So thank you, Dirk, so for a great summary, um, and appreciate basically the work that you're doing to try to get this back on track. Um, I guess the question, I have a couple of questions. So to start with the first one, which is, um, you mentioned that the city light, uh, changes, I mean, it's going to be the primary driver of the cost overrun and there's basically, um, essentially challenges working with SCL currently that, uh, are not addressed in our franchise agreement. And I know that the franchise agreement is not up for several years now, so we won't be talking about it on this council or the next, but what would your recommendations be for making the franchise agreement more clear as to what's expected of city life?
I, we, we had this discussion recently, uh, with respect to Comcast because their franchise agreement is currently up for it. And the language that I like is, uh, found in our franchise agreement with the Lake Forest Park Water District. So in that franchise agreement, uh, there's pretty clear expectations set for how the design coordination process will work and it sets very specific timeframes for exchange of information. The city provides information about our project to the utility. They have X number of days to, you know, provide a relocation plan. We have X number of days to respond to that. They have X number of days. It's very, you know, sort of, um, rigidly defined like what the, um, what the responsiveness, uh, expectations are. Um, so that's, that, so I passed really the, that same language on to, uh, our city attorney and director, you know, for uh, hopeful conclusion in the, in the Comcast agreement. I kind of would imagine doing something similar, um, when the SCL agreement comes up. The SCL agreement, the only timing, um, component that we can hold them to is when they perform the work. We have to give them notice of the need to relocate a year in advance of that. Between the issuance of that notice and when they're supposed to have the work done. There's very, you know, I don't want to say there's nothing we can, there's very little we can do to, uh, require them to engage with our team to provide certain types of information that we need. So that's been, you know, at the heart of the struggle to finalize this design with them.
I can see how that's frustrating. Thank you. It's totally. Um, so you mentioned utilities. Uh, have you also been in discussion with other stakeholders from since Washita Metro? Just make sure that they're on board with these designs as we, as they evolve.
Washita is one of the utilities and
Oh, they got, they got us a utility.
Well, so they have, uh, overhead fiber optic cable that I think, um, is used in the operation of their signals, uh, that runs through the site. Um, so we're coordinating with them in that sense. And then also we have, uh, you know, two permitting, um, touch points with them. One of which is complete, uh, was done at thirty percent design and another on common ninety percent. Uh, so a lot of coordination with them. On the transit agencies, I know that, um, I don't know if there's been, I don't think there's been a lot of like direct engagement with them. Um, we have, like, our design team is well aware that this is a pretty heavily utilized transit route and have run and I think standard, I've done what's, you know, standard for ensuring that this roundabout can accommodate the movement of their vehicles around, you know, through the roundabout. They use starting simulation software to make sure that that's, um, that's going to continue to be possible. Um, and if anything else, uh,
Yeah, that and just developing traffic control plans to ensure the two-way traffic continues during, during construction, you know, along the way. Thanks. Let's move to the questions.
Apologize for an uncatching nearly purple. It appears that you did a inflation based adjustment of your cost estimate from thirty to sixty. I did. So, um, you've probably been reading about, Washita came out recently and said that there was seeing not three or four bidders, so seeing one or two bidders and you're seeing price increases of thirty percent of thirty percent. But I was seeing it's this is our time. So, um, I'm concerned about the overall, uh, cost of this project. It's one of those things that, uh, we have a gift horse. And, um, as we look at the horse's teeth, we are finding some problems. And, uh, we've got four million dollars in grants, which are dependent upon execution of this. And typically when you get grants, when you get this, city gets additional. Uh, so oftentimes prior to when you bid, because we can't bid without having funds available to us. So I'm concerned that when you go out to bid, that we're going to end up with a bid bust. And that our beautiful stallion may not be as pretty as we thought it was. So how are we, um, reviewing our estimates to assure ourselves that, uh, this can in fact be done for what we think is our estimate? Or are we going to be looking at a significant bust if we get a genuine record? And is that estimate going to be an inflation based or is it going to be based on market assessment and context and potential bidders? How are we estimating? There's a difference between doing a forecast estimate, you know, a market estimate.
We'll just say that the, the estimates that I've applied just as to try to keep the cost somewhat current with what the schedule is doing, um, are based on, you know, advice from consultants about what inflation they're using in their estimates. So I'm not, that's a, it's a quick and dirty approach, you know, to, uh, trying to not lose sight of inflation as a, as a factor, you know, in, uh, in the cost. So I'm not a, of course, I'm a professional cost estimator. Right on that access to, um, all the resources that those folks do. But anyway, as to the engineer's estimate of, uh, probable construction cost, can you, um,
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll just shed a light on a couple of things. I didn't see the Seattle Times article. Um, I, I, I would offer that, uh, typically projects wash up bids are different than municipal projects just from scope and scale. And the types of projects that wash out contracts has a much smaller pool of contractors that can do the work versus a three to four million dollar municipal project that there's a, there's a bigger pool of contractors out there. And, uh, you know, one good thing about having a, uh, a wide consulting team is we all have, we all bring something to the table from our experiences from the standpoint of projects we designed and built along the way. And, and we also have a lot of relationships with municipalities throughout the Pecos Town area. So when we develop our cost estimates, we don't just rely on whatever happened last year or two years before. We're also looking at, uh, what projects have been did recently and what those have come back to, um, the Builders Exchange website, DXWA or or Edge or what have you, is a really good resource to find every project that's been did, uh, for every public agency within the, within the Washington, you know, Pecos Town area essentially. And, uh, quite often I'll go through it, you know, like, and download other, other consultants' work, other agencies' work. So we have other, uh, unit costs to compare it to for kind of size and scope and everything's different and and, and how, uh, contractors are, are positioned with their future work for the next summer. That factors into it and all that, as you're aware, but uh, but essentially we are looking at, uh, other projects to give us a sense of what those unit costs would be. So when we build it, whether it's pipe or road or rock. Another thing that we, we built in to, uh, figure out what our best estimate would be is, uh, is relying on our construction management firm, which is, uh, JBA Associates. Uh, we have them on our team to provide constructive delivery reviews at different, uh, different steps. So that'll be they reviewed it at the very first stage and give us big picture, uh, information. And the next stage that, uh, well, really officially in our scope of work, it was originally just a thirty percent or ninety percent. We did pair sixty to, because of other, other reasons that we needed to keep things moving. Um, but they've been involved in the, uh, construction staging and kind of, uh, bouncing ideas off of each, you know, off of each other to kind of make sure that we're designing a project that's buildable and maintain traffic going through it. Uh, but I will be, well, we'll be relying on them also to give us their, uh, perspective on the cost that's going to put together. So it's not just us working in a vacuum or our structural engineer doing their walls and our civil. So we have, um, multiple, multiple engineers all weighing in on what they believe their costs are for their kind of area expertise as well as, uh, someone kind of giving that type of quality control review, uh, when it's all put together.
I'll look forward to your estimate.
As well, I. Uh, so we check with folks online, uh, Vice Chair Cassover or Customer Buddy, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I appreciate Councilmember Lebo's point because the last thing I want to do is get very deep in this only to find that we've designed a project that, uh, we can't possibly afford. I think this is an important project, but we do have to keep our eye on the, on the cost. So, um, I appreciate the information and what's changed, um, and and why, uh, changes would have to occur, but I am concerned long run about whether we're going to be able to take advantage of the funds that we've already gotten to complete this project within our, our resources. It does, it does concern me. I, I, I hope the answer is yes, that it's going to come in, um, reasonably cost and we'll be able to figure out a way to fund it, but it, it is a concern. I realize that's not the subject of today's discussion, but big picture, it is a concern. So, but, uh, thanks for the discussion and Councilmember Foritani, thank you for your comment about taking a look at our agreements going forward.
Good Councilmember, Vice Chair Castle.
Thank you. Um, I too, uh, appreciate, um, Councilmember Foritani's question that was going to be, that was on my mind too, to make sure that we, um, take a really good look at that franchise agreement and, um, with an eye to, uh, improving it and benefiting the city more than it apparently does at this point. Um, I find this, uh, discussion of cost very interesting. I do appreciate though too, that the type of project this is may be of a different ilk than many of the, um, Washita projects are. And hopefully that puts us in a better position than some of those really massive Washita projects, which I do get to hear about at Seashore. Um, it's one of the things that's holding up the whole revive I five, um, you know, uh, schedule as well. So anyway, um, thank you very much for all this good information. I did read everything very carefully and, um, hope that, uh, things will move along in a positive way and would be supportive of the changes that you're suggesting here today, um, and the increases in the budget that's, that are required right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Philippa. I'll just jump in real quickly for a second. Um, I do appreciate a conversation about the franchise agreement. I think that's really important. I've been hearing out there in the broader community, uh, we do some reason that Seattle City Light is very difficult to work, but right now, and I think it's going to be really important going forward. Oh, it's going to be a while before we can do it to make sure that franchise agreement has, uh, weight hold or future of fire because it does cost us more money and a lot of time. Based, you know, regarding the responsiveness. Um, I, I do, I too have concerns about the past we've gone from initial estimates of less than half of this while ago, uh, you know, um, and so I, I, I really appreciate Mr. Lebo's comments about what, what kind of where we're going, um, as well as customer bodies. I, I really sincerely hope that we're going to find that, that this is a project that is, is, um, is going to be within our means and we're going to be able to, to, to facilitate it, uh, because this is a very important project. Many of us were out on the roadways over the last few, few days and, uh, and we need improvement. And so this is, this is a great way for us to leverage our scarce funds. However, if those scarce funds become, uh, you know, enormously larger, that are required, then we're going to have to reevaluate this. On a positive note, I wanted to mention that I have been up at the one eighty fifth roundabout a couple of times in the last, uh, week. Uh, they're halfway done as of last Friday. And it is, if you haven't seen it, it's absolutely beautiful, um, the roundabout there right by the, the, the light rail station. And, um, I'm assuming it's going to be about the same size as what, what we're, we're looking at. So I would encourage you to take a look at it. They may actually be done with it by now. I haven't been up there this week, but, um, they were, they're doing it half and half. So it's really quite, uh, quite lovely and very, seems to be very, going to be very effective for them for their location. Um, because we're, did you have any thoughts?
Uh, similar concerns, you know, we're, we're all facing the crunch of inflation and, and revenue, how that's going to work on this guy. You know, I, I've been on the one eighty, the half of the roundabout, um, and just as a comment, it, it's a one, oh, one road, two-way, they've got the signalization, automatic signalization there. So I am really curious of how we're going to accommodate the one oh four flow during construction. I think that's going to be a big piece of the success of the project. Um, and I don't know what that looks like exactly, but, uh, I'd be, I'm interested in seeing how we're basing that. I do a lot of basic work in my life. So trying to understand that, see, see the impact to store community because if it becomes challenging, people who keeps our alternate roads, then we'll need to have a traffic management plan in place internally. And now the price goes up for us to be able to, you know, staff, uh, officers for that kind of traffic management. So a, a lot of pieces up in the air right now and, um, we can get a better picture here soon of what we're really going to be looking at.
Thank you, everybody, and thanks, everybody, for your comments. They're really a point. And, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Levo's force analogy, but I'm going to slightly turn our self attention to the Kelvin timeline of Star Trek. In which the Federation discovers all of its wounds are self inflicted. I'm wondering, second point you made about our new code requirements having impact on our price. Are there any other capital projects we have out there that we have now inadvertently priced up?
Not mine. No, this, you know, the the cover replacement upon. Base one in history that doesn't have any retaining laws and that there's, there may be tree impacts and right away. But this project is characterized in that the code is a right of way corridor project. So that there are special submittals that retain only to that type. That, you know, most of my other projects are more limited sites, they're, you know, footprint is smaller and they they're below the threshold. I kind of check those requirements. Yeah, and I don't think that involves on any other my project, so.
Specifically, I didn't know what our exposure was on that project of Balmshire Creek. Coming down from the public work shard of Shorelines or in form of public work shard. I don't know how far along that project is.
At our front, it's a shoreline project or a joint project.
Yeah, yeah.
That's many years away. I don't know. There is the. Repaying system right now.
Yeah. Give you. So, yeah, that's. Mr. Wong.
Um, yeah, thanks. In short term, I'm supportive of these contract amendments. Longer term, I I know we're going to be asking the legislature for additional funding for this. I think it'd be helpful to have some contingencies in case the legislature only funds part of the gap or is on anything. So if we as a city need to raise a million dollars or one and a half or two or more, you know, what are our options to keep the project moving forward?
And I just want to look at Mark's update. Sorry to do.
There's, there's one form of funding contingency that's available to us even. Even in the kind of situation that Councilmember Lebo described where the bids come in higher than anticipated. The T I D funding. The way the rewards been described to me is you get amount X, but they have a budgeted X plus fifteen percent. And if you can come to them with bids in hand and demonstrate that. You know, your your costs have increased by fifteen percent, but the increase in cost is kind of priced on eligible expenditures. Then it's a simple administrative approval from their director to grant you that additional five percent. There's a little bit of. Offer in, you know, the sources that we have. Much more taken about, yeah, just. Potentially larger surprises that we accommodate those. Thank you.
Mr. Wong. So just a comment, I mean, the place for the additional funding, if you can't get additional funding from the state or if there's a gap between what we have and what we need, it's our consumers.
Did you hear that?
It's our, it's our reserves. That's where the difference would come from. Because you have a bid in hand and so you've got this funding grant and you either use it or lose it. And so you you have this issue that you now say ten percent short, six hundred thousand dollars. So your options then are to take it out of your reserves if you can't find it anywhere else. Otherwise you lose all. Oftentimes, I don't know if this agreement, some agreements, some grant agreements have the chat pay back any money spent. And I don't know if that's a condition of this one. It's a condition that I've had on other brands. It's very painful.
Ouch, yeah. I was just going to say, just bookmarking the franchise agreement question going forward. We need to make sure this is something I've talked toward the little team about in the past, the height of utilities. Because many municipalities require a minimum of eighteen feet for some of these. That's what we could find anyway. And as a matter of fact, my understanding of the city of Bellevue actually has something that goes out with a pole when they're hanging lines so that they're not, as in our case. And Vice your Castle knows I've brought about this for over a decade. In some cases, they're eight feet off the ground in front of people's moments, which is really quite alarming. And so we need to make sure that in any agreement worth the utilities, we have that requirement. Hey, colleagues, other questions for Mr. Silvian and and if not, we can, if there's anything else, Mr. Silvian, you and Kirk want to continue with. Vice your Castle, I'm sorry.
I really don't have a question, but I I just wanted to. Remark that I had a lot of experience of roundabouts in the last month because we did. If driving in France and this one trip that we took was eighteen kilometers. And there was literally a roundabout every kilometer and a half because it was a main road with a lot of cross crossroads. And you get really used to driving them once you've done that for a while. But the ones in town are harder. This won't be a really urban roundabout the way some of the ones, one of which we had to go around three times before we figured out what our exit really should be. But anyway, I'm really looking forward to this roundabout. I think that that, you know, so for me. When I look at that intersection, which I go through very often. I'm going to be interested in really doing everything we can to make it happen because that is a dangerous intersection. And I can't see another solution to it other than a roundabout. So and I see my my neighbor, Council for Tarni shaking his head because he he also goes through that this intersection a lot. So anyway, good luck, guys, and and, you know, I'll be watching from the sidelines as the years go by here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
When when are we going to see, able to see updated draft for all the documents?
I talked about that earlier today. The expectation is, you know, like January.
And then when would you then in your schedule be submitting for like a permanent application?
So that's the, we're planning on our writer, Washog writer, at ninety percent correct. You know, the. I think some of the others that we have, like the the tree permit application, the retaining wall application, it's really about just getting those. You know, some of the services in this amendment authorized and assume as we're ready to submit, there's nothing. Not tied to a particular miles gone, if you can get it ready before ninety percent.
I I would say just in general, the schedule, the critical path on the whole schedule is acquisition of right of way. So part of that has been. The the process of getting Seattle City Lights approval of the areas that are being purchased for their use. There's aerial easements and such, and then kind of streamlining things. So that when we do go to the property owners, it'll, it'll all, it'll be approved by the user and it all makes sense. And we have, and one of the things that's in here as well is like the city is acting with one. Or the property owners are are coordinating with one person, one voice versus, okay, we have Seattle City Lights, right? Real estate agent, the city's real estate agent and all that's we're putting all of the the purchase and sale agreements together. So it's like, so if it's got one point in contact and one to them. Yeah, exactly. And so that that process, I mean, we still, we have some work to do to get the exhibits ready. And then their properties appraised, we know all the prints are. But the the length of time coordinating with each of the property owners, we want to allow us, you know, that that's the critical path. So we're expecting that will take nine, six to eight months where it's really, you know, it's it's a collaborative approach, but they're, you know, they're the, it's their property at home. So it does take kind of a depth. Approach to working with them if it's a sensitive issue. And so that's why. While the the sign is important, getting it done, like January early. Sorry, that's getting that done is important. That's. The the time for us to design is not the part that quite frankly is between now and when we actually advertise the project. It's getting all the rights rights secured before you go to add.
I'm slightly curious how the the routine fall really is as we're looking at this project.
In terms of height.
Height and length. Yeah, I'm just curious where it's going to look.
Yeah, and some of that I can share with. Yeah, yeah, we're, 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 we're locked in, if you will, on what that profile will look like. And so and and one of the discussions we've had with 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 staff is what what does the face look like and all that? And so, you know, we've taken the page from the city's ordinance and the wall ordinance and and, you know. And I was even just looking at the Google Street View like, I don't think I know exactly where that photo, that one photo was taken of the shock group. It looks like a rat rock when, you know, it was down on five twenty two. And so that's what, that's what our structural engineer is developing the plans for.
Yeah, if you have the ability to share from start.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, it sounds, yeah, if I give you a length, it's like, wow, that's something, you know, so, but it's sort of. It it.
Yeah.
And we have landscaping in front of it as well. So sort of a combination that 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 does what we can to replicate that image that's in that work.
It's nice to see a successful implementation with the general, for example, for other institutions.
Other questions? We've got about three or four minutes left. I think I would echo Councilmember Vice your Castle's comments about this, this, I think it's going to be a wonderful project. Hopefully the numbers can, we'll be happy with them. I'm not sure whether that's the right word. Mr. Lee was probably cringing right now on that with that, but I do think it's really, it is a very important safety project. And I think it's also a very important project relative to sort of flow of things that within our community, both pedestrian and. The particular and just as a reminder, this project originated, was it five years ago? Turn and River and it came with a, it started out of a, with a tour, if I recall correctly, of a T I D representative saying this is the perfect place for something like this. So they were the ones who were advocating for it, which is just really helpful for all of us because we know they're on board. So. Is there something more that you'd like to contribute?
No, I think I I covered what I wanted to and happy to answer any other questions that come up. Like I said, I'll be back. Meeting in December and. Yeah, we'll continue the discussion then.
Okay. Well, thank you very both very much. So. I guess that's all we have for today. If there are no more questions and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you upstairs.